I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please go on the roll?
Mr. Alec.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Ms. Karstharfen.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Ms. Seigwin.
Would everybody please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome to the May 17, 2023, Aleria Board of Education meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is board member Mike Gebhardt. Elaine Seigwin cannot make it today. I am Greg Alec. To my left is board member Andy Karstoffen. To her left is board member Len Hauser. Then is our superintendent Anne Slush. And all the way on the end is our treasuring Colleen Aholz. Okay, I believe we have a very special presentation today. Something that everybody looks forward. Oh, you know what? Sorry, we're going to hold off on the five-year forecast. We even have a better presentation today. We're going to talk a little levy renewal here today. So, Mike, would you like to come up and fill us in on our levy options here? Hopefully, that's on if you can speak into the microphone.
Give it a try and hopefully that works.
Perfect.
Good evening, thanks for having me.
Sure.
I came in to deliver a bit of an update from our conversations going all the back to November. It's not a huge update, it shouldn't be too long, but just a reminder of what we have out there is probably a good place to start. So, we have a law called current expense levy of 4.95 mils that will expire with collection year '24. And we have what's called an emergency levy that produces $12.6 million or so, and that expires in collection year '25. And so, like most districts who have levies coming up, some amount of energy is spent thinking of the very best way to strategize going forward, given those, a long list of our clean rules that apply to each of them, as well as just help us to present them in a way that's efficient and put you in best stead. So, the conversation appears to be to look for renewals. And so, first and foremost, these would be renewal in the classic sense of taking something you already have and then extending it forward in time, not adding to it or otherwise enhancing it. And the feeling seems to be to pair them up together so that they're presented as, at the same elections, they'll be different questions, but presented as, hopefully, consecutive issue numbers. And to do that, because the emergency levy is one year farther out and it's before it last collects, the thought would be to do that for the upcoming, this general, the primary, which will be a presidential primary next year. Right now, that would be a March date under law. But as you know, for the last several primaries, Ohio has vacillated on when it wants to hold its primary. It's been anything from May back to March. Don't know what that will be. But whatever the date, that would be an opportunity where this could first happen, is the two of them together, those two renewals. So, if that's the strategy we take, then we won't need to worry about doing anything by way of official action until much later into this year, really probably during the holiday season. And we'd be taking separate legislative action in the way that I think you're accustomed to, which is an initial resolution. We get some information from the county auditor, and then we do a second resolution for each one to submit them to the ballot. So, that's the thinking as of right now, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Is that common to pair two together when they're separate by a year? Or doesn't it really matter?
It's highly specific to, you're in a fortunate, I'd say it's highly specific to context. And you're in a very fortunate position where these are the only two limited-term levies that you have. And so, there's some thought that if we can go in particularly, if we renew the one that is susceptible of being renewed for a continuing period, then it will continue to ratchet down the amount of times that you have to be on the ballot asking for something, even if what you're asking for is simple renewals as opposed to asking for new money.
Okay. How many years is that for or would it be four?
Well, we, right now, the levy, the 4.95 mil levy is in a five-year term, and it's the kind of levy that's susceptible of running any number of years up to five or for a continuing period. The emergency levy, and trust me, there's no good reason for all of this. It can only run for a maximum of 10 years. It's on the end of a 10-year term as we approach it, and I think the thinking would be to renew it for an additional 10 years.
Also, is the presidential election, is that a good time to do it or?
I think we're going to see a good turnout, which I think a lot of people feel like does well in this country. I think regardless of it, I think we'll see high turnouts, both in the presidential and the general in '24. And because the only other election running is the general this year, I think we won't see the oddness that we had just a few weeks ago where there was extraordinarily low turnout at the May election that just occurred.
Mr. Gebhardt, we also clued in Vanessa from Burgess and Burgess who helps us, and she agreed it was a good time.
That's harsh. Yeah, we should have shaken.
Shaking away.
Do we know the date? Have they decided on the date for the primary yet or is that still?
Well, right now, we call it March '24. I don't know if, I think it's the third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday, okay.
Or the first Monday. But I think it's better to stay tuned on those just given the amount of movement there's been on the Ohio primary, just given the political winds that blow through the country.
Okay. All right, so your recommendation obviously is to package them both together. They'd be two separate issues and put them on at the March primary, correct? Okay.
That's the direction we're heading.
Okay. Any questions or comments, board members?
No.
Okay, great. Thanks for the update. And when does the final decisions have to be made on all this?
Well, the filing deadline for this November is not until August 9.
Okay.
And then there'll be a similar 90-day cycle that will lead to, the filing deadline for the primary next year will be 90 days before the election.
Okay.
And so, you end up, generally speaking, we've chosen to use your regular meetings that lead up to the filing deadline, keep it very normal. And it should be, oh, there's nothing unusual about this. So, we'd be coming back to you with legislation, probably that November, December timeframe.
Okay, all right. Well, it's good to start thinking about this. That's not that far away, and we appreciate you keeping us in the loop.
We've got a great team of support here, so my pleasure.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
All right, so a lot to think about there with the levy. And it's pretty good timing here. We can also talk five-year forecast here, too. So, Colleen, you want to do your first five-year forecast for us there?
Yes, I can't wait, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have the five-year forecast up there. I only have a few slides just because I would think just for visual that it might be a little bit less boring, so hopefully that will, that will help out. But I promise it won't be long unless you want me to go on forever, and I can. I'm just going to go over the agenda really quick. I'm going to do the purpose of the forecast, an umbrella view of the revenues and expenses, and the levy renewals expenses, and then the bottom line. So, just a pretty much an umbrella view of the district's finances. The first thing that I like to go over is the purpose of the forecast for anybody new turning in or just asking why do we do this all the time? First thing is, because I have to, it's Ohio revise code, so that's one thing that we do. But it's another management tool for financial planning. And then the third is what I think is the most important, is to engage the Board of Education and the community with the long-range financial planning and decisions of financial issues. So, it kind of brings it all transparent, so we're all on the same page. And go right into it with the revenues and how our district's financed, specifically how is Aleria financed? The, your financed, your most resources that you have come from your local resources and then your state resources. The other little amount that you have comes from reimbursements or refunds or donations. But your major revenue sources come half from your local districts, that's the blue line, 45%, and then the other half from your state sources. I think it's very important to point out the orange part of your state sources are 44% because we are coming up with a new biannual budget for the governor. And since Aleria gets a lot of state funding, it's very important to pay attention to that. So, one of the things that was proposed in the House, going to the Senate, I think they're actually amending it today and then maybe going to vote in June, but to implement the phase-in for the fair school funding, which is a positive for Aleria. But they're also talking about using the 2022 expense input numbers. And what that means for Aleria is, depending on how much the expenses are in '22, they'll give that as the revenue for Aleria. So, currently, they're using 2028 numbers. If they use 2022 numbers, that's going to be a whole world of difference for Aleria. That would actually increase our revenues through the five-year forecast about $17 million. So, I usually don't like to do appendices at the end of the forecast because the forecast is a snapshot of time, and there's always assumptions that has to be made. But since this is such a big one and since it's coming up, I have the last page of the forecast, which will be available on the website later on, that if it does pass with what the House proposed, with the 2022 numbers and with the phase-in of the fair school funding plan, you could see the cumulative amount of the revenue extra that Aleria will be getting. So, I've spent too much on this slide, so I'm sorry. So, let's go to the next one. We have local resources, that would be the property taxes. And just a little recap of what Ms. Sharp was talking about. We have the two renewals that are coming up. We have the current expense, and then we have the emergency levy. Rehashes of what he was talking about, that they are renewals, they're not, they will not raise taxes. They tell you the five years is the one, you have 10 years is the other one. And then when the tax year expires and when the collection year expires. But in a visual view, I like to look at that. You could see the property tax revenue. The orange at the end, or I think I have a little arrow, that's what I'm looking at. The orange part of it shows the renewal. So, if they do not pass, those go away, and you can see the revenues go down. If they do pass, you can see that the revenue remains stable. The other side of the coin are the expenses. 70% of our expenses for Aleria are salary and benefits, and that's normal because we're a service. And then the other major expense, we have our purchase services. So, for Aleria, that's transportation, security, utilities. We're always looking about cutting expenses or saving money where we can. But if you throw them together, you get this nice chart. We're comparing the revenues and the expenses. The revenues are the blue. This is assuming that renewals pass. You could see the steady revenue flow. And the expenditures are the orange. And you can see how the expenditures increase where the revenues don't necessarily match that. So, there's two things you could do, either increase revenues or decrease expenses. So, those are the conversations that we're talking about. And then another thing to point out here is in fiscal year between '24 and '25, you could see how the orange line increases dramatically. That's when the S R money falls off, and that's when all those expenses that we either shift to the S R money or that we implemented new because of S R, they have to go somewhere, and they come back to the general fund. So, you could see where that huge increase of expenses come. And then my last slide I have is pretty much the whole forecast summed up in one beautiful picture. You can see the revenues are in black, the expenses are in gray. The little orange are the revenue, are the renewals. So, you could see how, if the renewals pass, we have steady flow of revenue, but the expenses are over the revenues, which gives you that yellow line decreasing when we start deficit spending, meaning the expenses are over the revenues. And you could see far out to 2027 how not only will we deficit spending, but we'll have a negative cash balance. But there's a lot of assumptions going into this. This has not taken effect, the 2022 numbers for the biannual budget if that does pass. So, there's a lot going in. We're stable for the next two years, but there's a lot going on after that. And I probably did that really fast, but you probably didn't mind that. So, if you have any questions, please. And my information's there, emails there if anybody else has questions to do, if they want to email anything.
I have to ask on this state funding, the change in the state funding. So, can either one of you two, in layman's terms, kind of explain the change that would generate the $17 million?
Yeah, so I'll do it in layman's terms, but don't quote me on this if this is not right. But, so there's two major things that's going on with that state funding. One, they are implementing that we're going to keep the new funding formula, which helps out Aleria, and they're going to phase in, which they're phasing in small, like 16% this year, 33%, and then 50%. So, one, if they include the phase-in, we'll get more money with that. Another thing that they propose is to include the phase-in, but to also use the 2022 numbers. And what I mean by that is, in layman's terms, don't quote me on this, but they will take the, how much it is to the salary of a teacher from 2022, all the expenses in 2022 versus 2018. So, if you look at what it costs to run a district in 2018, it's going to be a lot less than what it costs a district in 2022. So, they're going to say, okay, it costs this much, then you need this much revenue to help you out. So.
Okay, yeah, that helps a lot.
Yeah, and I believe when, before Colleen was here, when they were looking at the fair funding, it was over a $9 million grab for Aleria if we kept the fair school funding, so. And it was phasing in. So, I don't know if those numbers are steady, but it was a nice increase.
And what's your feel on that? Is this going to move forward? Are you hearing good things?
So, BASSA, who is the one that I talk to most in my, and the bannings, as I call them, they feel strongly that, you know, they already took out the SRO piece a little bit, but they say it's coming in different ways. I don't see how they can not do some of that. You know, I don't know that they'll do everything. But I think, when you think about the fact that they're still paying us on 2018 with the inflation that's happened in the last four to five years with the pandemic, I don't see how they can expect us to live. So, we are hearing that we have a pretty good chance because the governor is very much supportive of a lot of this work and that. So, fingers crossed. Nathan said he'd keep us updated.
Yeah, and I think we'll know more June 12th, is I think when the Senate votes on what they propose. So, we'll know more, and hopefully, we'll know by June 30th at midnight. We'll see what happens, but.
Okay. All right, questions?
The local sources, what does that all include?
The local sources are your local property taxes, so all the levies that we have on. I just specifically talked about the two because those are the ones that are coming up, but all the other ones that we have.
Can I make one other comment?
Sure.
The 70% for salaries and personnel is on the low end. A lot of districts are over the 80%. So, I did want to make note of that, and I see Vanessa shaking her head. Most companies and districts are in the 80% range. So, I feel good about the fact that we are watching, you know, our spending, although we are making sure that, you know, we're not overextending, and we have added personnel as needed. But, you know, we are being very fiscally responsible in many areas.
Yeah, I would say with the fiscal responsibility we've had with Joy and now with Colleen, and the change in the state funding and the levies, I think fiscally, Aleria Schools definitely has a bright future here. So, that's very good news to me here. So, but we definitely have to pass a couple of them.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments, board? All right, great, super. Thank you, Colleen. Appreciate you doing the five-year forecast. All right, move back to business here. Did we have anybody sign up to talk today?
No.
No visitors, so we'll move right into Board of Education. The minutes were posted for the May 3, 2023, board meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to look those over, and I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Board Member Gebhardt, second by Board Member Karstoffen. Any comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstharfen.
Aye.
Mr. Hauser.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Madam Treasurer, you have some action items for us this evening?
I do have. We have the monthly financial statements for approval for April. We also have the approval of the purchase orders to comply with the district's purchasing procedures. Those were timing issues. And then we also have a donation from Jessica Sen. Thank you for Viole, for Aleria High School Orchestra.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's action items?
So moved.
A motion by Board Member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Hauser. Questions and comments? Madam Treasurer, at one time, you talked about maybe reviewing and changing our policies on the purchase orders. Are you still looking into that? Do you have any suggestions maybe coming up here?
Yeah, so I'm hoping with the timing, there's definitely internal controls you could try with that. But specifically, I was talking about when it goes over budget for the P O. Like that definitely, that we put a stop to that, that you, we're not going to, you have to have a purchase order in place or to amend the purchase order so it won't go over the amount.
Sure.
So, that has already been in place. As far as the timing issue, that's a constant control issue that we're all working with.
Okay. All right, well, keep us posted. It just seems, I understand going over, but obviously, the timing ones, it just takes longer because you're at the mercy of the vendor. I don't really understand what control is there. But either way, let us know on that. All right, any other questions?
I have a question. One of the purchasers was Susan L. Chocolatiers for like $10,000?
The school fundraiser.
Okay, so that money.
I can guarantee you it's probably those little ones over at Pre-K because I end up buying way too much chocolate.
Okay.
Good eye there. Any other questions? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstharfen.
Aye.
Mr. Hauser.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Madam Treasurer, you have other items for us this evening?
I have the five-year forecast for approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the five-year forecast? A motion by Board Member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Karstoffen. Comments or questions? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstharfen.
Aye.
Mr. Hauser.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
Aye, motion carries. Any other reports this evening, Madam Treasurer?
I do not.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. Madam Superintendent, you have action items for us this evening?
We're going to give this a roll. If my voice gives out, it's all, or the treasurers. All right, first of all, we have some contracts. First of all, the hearing and speech contract to approve for next year and the year after, we get a better deal with two years. Then also, the educational service center contract, People Services. The educational contract with St. Jude for an agreement to go through the educational service center for, to approve the agreement on insight consulting. The agreement with suburban transportation for next school year. To approve the academic field trip to, with our J R O T C students to leadership camp. To approve the BUDsMAN contract with People Services for the 23, 24 years. I know it says all three years there, but they forgot to take that part out. It is just a one-year. This is where they're using a few rooms over at the Village for primary autism, and we get some free spots. So, it saves us money. It's a wonderful program, too. Also, to approve the overnight field trip for the boys' basketball team to attend camp in Finley. To approve the two-day rate for this special education teacher for a program relocation. To approve the payment of stipend. We're doing some shifting at Miss Westwood Middle so the teachers have time they can work to change their rooms. To approve the pair professionals to support the extended school year and summer programming. To approve the purchase order of 20 clever touches. Believe it or not, you know, the high school's getting older, and it's time for smart boards to go bye-bye. So, we're doing a phase-in. And that concludes my action items.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's action items?
So moved.
A motion by Board Member Hauser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Karstoffen. Comments or questions? So, I guess, is Brian actually here today?
He is.
What's the difference between a clever touch and a smart board?
A clever touch is like a television where the touch capability is built in, whereas the smart boards were, oh, they're about 15 years old now, that technology. It's a projector on the ceiling onto some sort of dry erase board-looking thing that's touch-sensitive. So, the new ones are much brighter and more responsive.
Very nice.
You don't have to turn the lights out to see them necessarily.
Okay. All right, other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hauser.
Aye.
Ms. Karstharfen.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Alec.
Aye, motion carries. Madam Superintendent, you have personnel action items?
I do, and a couple introductions at the end. First of all, I approve the resignation of the certified administrator, Mrs. Lengel. She's been here for 22 years. Started as a teacher, I think, with her father-in-law over at Northwood, Steve Lengel. So, we wish her well. Sad to see her going. She's been a phenomenal employee. To approve the resignation of Caitlin Henkel from Grade 3 Ely. She's relocating. To approve the retirement of the following staff. She is 35 years in, Leanne Kohli, and her letter says, please call me back for tutoring. So, she doesn't want to be done, but she wants to spend some grandchild time. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following certified staff members. To approve the terminations as detailed below. These are routine every year, the substitutes, they call them terminations. You hate to say that, but that's what they are. They're ending their contract. To approve the appointment of the following administrative staff, Holly Campbell. Just a little note on this, we had her in place this year, and she's here tonight. But we paid it through a grant through the E S C, and she'll move into a different grant and come here. Also, to approve the middle school principal at Northwood, John Capacetti Quintana. I hope I did not, oh, thank you. To approve the appointment of the following certified staff as listed below. We have three great new teachers. And then to approve the renewal of the following certified and administrative contracts as listed below. To approve the employment of the continuing contracts for certified staff. To approve the one-year limited contracts for all limited certified staff members. To approve the following athletic supplemental contracts for the following district below, or I'm sorry, district certified staff below. Starting to hire the fall coaches already. And to approve the payment for up to three days to the following employee for training and transitioning. To approve the payment for the following supplement, other supplemental activities. These are things they try to do new each year, and we have a pot of money we work with the E A on to assign them. To approve the stipend payment for up to 10 days for the following employees over the summer. And then another one for up to five days for our home education packets. To approve the stipend payment for up to 20 hours for the following employees at the hourly rate. To approve the stipend payment for up to 20 hours for the following employee at the hourly rate. Mr. Burke, as you know, is retiring, but he's going to help us transition over the summer. To approve the stipend payment of up to 20 hours for our college career summer programming. To approve the stipend payment for our extended summer learning program at the high school level. To approve the retirement of the following classified staff. To approve the termination of limited contracts of the following classified staff. And as you see, that's just a yearly thing with our resource officers and everything. To approve the resignation of the following classified staff member. To approve the appointment of classified staff as described below. To approve the two-year limited contracts of the following classified staff for the next two years. And that concludes my personnel action items.
Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstoffen. Do I have a second? Second by Board Member Gebhardt. Questions or comments?
Just Ms. Lengel, boy, what a great, what a great principal. All three Hauser girls went through Westwood, and it was a great building. It was, they had a great time there, so she certainly was great. Just wanted to acknowledge that, yeah.
Thank you.
Boy, a lot going on here with this H R group over there, huh?
Yes, he's being, he's being well-trained.
All right, do I have a, we got a motion, we have a second? Okay, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Trowell?
Aye, motion carries.
And Madam Superintendent, what new pioneers do we have with us this evening?
Well, I'm gonna let, because I know Mrs. Matthews has to get to her daughter's concert, so I'm gonna let her go first.
Okay.
With, I'm gonna call him John, because I said it once, right, we'll make sure, I'll practice over the summer, John.
Yes, so good evening, I would honor to welcome John Capacetti Quintana to our pioneer family. John is coming to us from Midview High School, he's an assistant principal there, and prior to that, he was a teacher in Olson Falls, he's taught Spanish, and he has a few other placements, he was before that as well, so we are thrilled, I think Jeanette sat in on our committee, John will be a co-principal at Northwood Middle School with Mr. Vazinsky, and we are very excited to have him join us, he and his family will be a great addition to our team, so if you'd like to be a part of that.
Great, welcome. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Denise, would you like to reintroduce Holly, who's now formally employed by us instead of the ESC?
So this is Holly Campbell, she's one of our bricks, I think you guys got the honor to see her present earlier, we presented on PVIS, but, yeah, she was covered through a grant last year, and this year, she made such an impression on us, we're gonna take her on as our own.
All right, welcome.
Welcome, Holly.
And then, we got a two-for-one, BOGO, with Paige, right? I thought your friend was the teacher, or is this your husband?
My husband.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so I went up to him, I said, you look like a teacher, and he goes, well, I tried to hire him anyway, but Paige Oaks?
Yes.
Is one of our new seventh, eighth grade social studies teachers at Westwood, so welcome Paige, where are you from?
I have spent the last five years teaching at Warrensville Heights Middle School, a blend of sixth, seventh, and eighth, history and English.
Awesome, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, and welcome, husband, all right, and I think that is it for newbies.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. All right, Madam Superintendent, do you have a superintendent report for us this evening?
I do, I do, just real short, I just want to congratulate everyone that was part of Special Olympics, from the planning team to the volunteers, it really truly was an awesome day, and the weather, I'm pretty, I think I'm hitting 100% on the weather so far as superintendent, so we're gonna go with it, but lots of wonderful Twitter messages from other districts on how well-run and beautiful it was. Also, this Friday, we have a table, some of us are going to the Urban League Gala, we're looking forward to that, and tomorrow is the senior award scholarship, tomorrow night, senior award scholarships, if anyone would like to join, it's always a wonderful night to see the students and all the scholarships they get each year, it's phenomenal. Tomorrow's also senior brunch in the morning, so we'll be busy, and then May 23, 7:00 p.m.
Early forecast?
It is sunny and 72.
Very nice.
And there's two days on each.
Whether that's true or not, very nice.
There's two, two days on each side that are sunny as well, so just a reminder, we have black, our black gown, capping gown, we don't have to wear the caps, make sure you have black pants on, if you cheer that with Elaine, black pants with the gown, that's usually the attire we wear, just as a reminder, I promised Patty I'd pass that along.
Okay, sounds good.
We have your tickets.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Okay, Board of Education, any items for the Good of the Cause?
Yes, I have a couple.
You have a couple?
Um, I went to Eastern Heights Middle School the other day, the International Festival, excellent, and I pulled in and expected to see a few cars, parking lot was full, the food was very good, I think it was all homemade.
Yep.
And the kids were great, they had entertainment, they had food, they had about anything you wanted, and good turnout.
Great, glad to hear it.
That was good to hear.
Outstanding.
Also, Brian, what, are we doing something with the path over there?
Is that?
Yeah, we're waiting for final exterior, exterior approval of the grounds, basically, still through the building project, believe it or not, we just did a walkthrough of that on Monday, so once that's done, and it's officially turned over to us, it becomes problematic when we're working where they're still responsible, and
Yeah.
Things get blurred as to what caused what, so we were waiting until that was finished before starting that, but it's on the list to hopefully complete this summer.
And is that just stone for that walkway, or are we actually doing a?
Stone.
Stone?
Stone, similar to what's already on the park side.
Okay, great. Other questions for the Good of the Cause, anything, no? You sure? Okay, with nothing else, we will move to the next item on the agenda, and I will request an executive session for the purpose of discussing and preparing for negotiations with public employees, and to discuss the employment appointment or compensation of a public employee, and to consider charges against a regulated individual, and to consider matters required to be kept confidential by state and federal law, probably all under Ohio Revised Code, Section 121, 222, and if not, I'm sure nobody's gonna check anywhere, so, do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Board Member Karstoffen, do I have a second?
Two attorneys laughing, so we're good.
All the attorneys are like, okay, Madam Treasurer, would you?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Call us out.
Aye. Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Who did second, sorry?
I have that.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Trowell?
Aye, motion, motion carries, and we are adjourned to executive session.